The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Plainville Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, December 4th, 7:00 PM. We'll begin with the pledge. I'll ask Councilwoman Thompsons to please lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to add executive session item to the agenda for a litigation matter.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a public hearing regarding an ordinance toward water pollution control facility phosphorus upgrade project. I'll ask our town clerk, Scott. Now you're the town clerk. You're a man of many hats. You wouldn't mind reading that notice. Thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the Town Council of the Town of Plainville, Connecticut, acting in its capacities as the Town Council and as the town's water pollution control authority, will hold a public hearing at the Town Council Chambers, Plainville Municipal Center, 1 Central Square in Plainville, Connecticut on Monday, December 4th, 2017, at 7:00 PM to consider the advisability of the design, construction, acquisition, installation, furnishing, and equipping of upgrades and related improvements to the town's water pollution control facility located at 90 Cronk Road in Plainville, intended, among other things, to reduce phosphorus concentrations and wastewater discharges to the Piquabic River. The project is contemplated to be completed substantially in accordance with the plans dated September 2017 and prepared by Ty &amp; Bond and to include, but not limited to, construction of an approximately 6,500-square-foot building and associated internal basins, tanks, pumps, and upgraded effluent treatment facilities, installation of flow equalization tanks and lift pumps, installation of an emergency generator, rerouting of various disinfection effluent flows, optimization of sequencing batch reactors by adding process instrumentation, installation of a second rotary drum thickener, replacement of the pumps at the filtrate pump station, and related work and improvements. Effective property owners and electors of the Town of Plainville, Connecticut will be heard at the public hearing concerning the proposed sewer project. Two, to consider a proposed ordinance entitled "Ordinance Appropriating $15,761,000 for upgrades and related improvements to the town's water pollution control facility and authorizing the issue of bonds and notes to the finance, the portion of the appropriation not defrayed from grants. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file and available for public inspection during normal business hours in the office of the town clerk in the Plainville Municipal Center 1 Central Square in Plainville and at the Plainville Public Library at 56 East Main Street in Plainville dated at Plainville, Connecticut this 30th day of November 2017."
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
That was a very detailed explanation regarding the ordinance that we're going to be taking public comment on. This is a project that has been talked about extensively by the Town Council over the past number of years, and we are now approaching the point where this project needs to get underway. So what I'll do is open the public hearing. I'll ask anybody that wishes to speak on the public hearing to come to either microphone. We believe our sound system is now operating as it's supposed to. And please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? John?
John Kisslick, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. We can't have a $15 million public hearing referendum when nobody's speaking, so I'll have to fill in. I want you to be patient with me tonight. It's almost full moon out there. And you know me. The public information hearing that we had, I attended it with Marilyn and I believe two other Plainville citizens. It was an excellent presentation as far as I'm concerned. It convinced me that we really have to do this, but you know, part of the presentation with the town manager, I've never seen him so accommodating and nice. I mean, he allowed us more than three minutes. We could get up and speak more than once if we wanted to. I was thinking for a while that he might have had an identical twin that he sent to the meeting. So, anyway, some of the main questions I had at that thing were if we were getting more phosphorus in the system from other sources. And one of them was, I asked about General Electric with pumping their groundwater, laundry detergent that's being backed off now, and I forgot to mention about the hospital on a hill that we ran a new six-inch pump line from the hospital waste to our system. You know, these were all questions I had that could be bringing more phosphorus. Ty &amp; Bond assured me that even if those weren't there, we still could not meet the state's regulations or whatever they needed for levels of phosphorus. So that convinced me that we have to do it. I'm not happy with it because I think the state went overboard, and I think the state and the federal government, when they do something stringent, they should pay for the whole thing. We've gone through that before. But since then, you know, I have this other booklet, and I had more time to look at this now. So some of the things I'm looking at now is project, total project costs. So I have some questions, and probably the council can't answer a lot of these, but through you, I would like if the town manager has this information, if he can answer, because I think this is something that the public should hear. You know, I don't think these are stupid questions that I have. It's the financial side. So if you allow the town manager to answer these, if he could, I'd appreciate it. The first thing is design. It's $1,192,000. Now, if you read what we read of the referendum tonight, it's almost like everything's already designed. And even with Ty &amp; Bond, they're talking about the buildings, the sizes, the piping, and everything. So my question is why it appears to me that the design is basically done, and the cost is still another $1,192,000? Why would that be so high?
Actually, it's not another $1 million. That's going to be the total cost, and some of it's already been spent.
Okay.
So, but in order to get the plans and specifications up to the state so that they can approve it and give us our grant and stay on task, you know, so the work that's been done to date will be eligible for reimbursement under the grant.
Right. I understand it. But I meant the whole design thing, if it seems to me like they have the major part of it done already.
That's correct.
And it's still a million one.
That's not additional.
No, I know it's not additional.
Okay, all right.
But it seems to me like it's a high price, so I just want to question it.
Now, I will say, in response to that, that the, you know, the state, the EEP, looks over the contract of the consultant, Ty &amp; Bond, because their money is going into this project as well. And they compare that against what they feel it takes to design these types of improvements. And so they do a detailed review of the cost, and they've determined that that $1.1 million is a reasonable number, given what their understanding of the project scope is.
Okay.
So just so you know, it's reviewed by a third party.
Okay. And I release the estimated project cost, so there could be some change. Now, the other one I have is temporary borrowing cost of $419,000. And if you look at the referendum, Section 5 says something about temporary advances of available funds to use for the borrowing. I'm wondering if we have $3 million in a sewer fund now, and we have like $9 million in our undesignated fund balance. I'm wondering, is that allowed? I know it mentions the IRS and all this. I was wondering if some of that is available for us to use towards temporary borrowing that we definitely pay back. I know we can't borrow or use any of that higher than our cost, our part of the cost of the project, but...
Yeah, some of it is temporary and permanent borrowing costs, and those include when we go out, you know, some of the attorney's fees and whatnot that get involved with the eventual closing on this particular loan, you know, from the state. But we may not use all of the 400 and some odd thousand. I mean, that's the worst-case scenario.
So in other words, that's not all the interest we're paying. That's the process of the lawyers and all this other...
Yeah, there's other costs.
Other things included. Okay. Now, this is just a different question. You know, when Ty &amp; Bond said, and you must really said that, with this new process, we're going to be creating more sludge. And I remember when this plant was done, the plant superintendent, after it was completed, he actually, if I'm correct, took a glass of water from the outpour to finish product and drank this. Now, I can see we have ultraviolet, so it killed the bacteria. But I'm just confused about how this is going to pull out more sludge if the water is clean enough to drink. Am I missing something here?
The phosphorus will create more sludge.
How does that happen to you?
The phosphorus removal will create more sludge.
Really? But see, what I'm saying is, we were already dumping it into the Piquabic Clear...
Including the phosphorus. Including the phosphorus. The removal of the phosphorus will create more sludge. So the question was, was it safe for him to drink the water that had a lot of phosphorus in it?
Right.
I wouldn't have drank it.
Well, that's, you know, that's why I'm asking this. And I think this is something that all the public should hear about, you know, especially this thing with this phosphorus. That's important. That's something that I didn't know. That removing that is going to cause a lot more sludge. And then, like you said, it's going to cost us more to truck this sludge away because there's going to be more sludge.
It's going to be increased operating costs, yes.
Okay. Now, the last part is where we're paying our sewer use rates. Ty &amp; Bond made it sound like, you know, the percentage is being reduced every year. But you're reducing the percentage of your increase, but the percentage is still on the previous increase. So over seven years, we are having an average yearly increase of $17.57 for seven years. At the end of the seven years, the minimum charge per resident is going to be $510 a year, and that's high. Now, my point of bringing this up, the contractor who I'm thinking might get this project, he specializes in this. He did our, the last plant update, and he's got a pretty sharp pencil. I worked on a couple of different jobs with him. If this project by some lucky chance would come in lower, would we redo these figures? Is this something that the town could redo to make it less for a yearly increase on our minimum charge?
We redo the figures each year.
Okay.
The last couple of years, they've been based on estimates, so we certainly would change the numbers, and it would be up to the council to decide how that might impact the user charges. But these numbers going forward certainly are not cast in stone in terms of what the increases might be.
Okay. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Yes, sir?
Joel Edman, 63 Ollie Berry Lane. I also am not against the nitrification phosphorus removal from the water, our water into the Piquabic. But I'm curious as to, are we the first to have to do this all the way up to? I don't even know where the Piquabic River starts, but I know I used to go through Bristol years ago, and it would come to Plainville, and it was yellow-green. You know, I'm talking 40 years ago. It's cleaned up very much.
Bristol is part of the same requirement.
Okay. Are we the first to have to do this?
No, actually, I believe Bristol has completed their project. Southington's in the middle of their project. There's, I believe, 17...
11.
11?
11.
There's 11 wastewater treatment plants in the state of Connecticut that have to upgrade their plants to reduce phosphorus loading. It's mostly on those plants that are located on low-flow rivers.
Even the Farmington River? Because the Piquabic flows into the Farmington River.
I don't believe the Farmington River would qualify. I believe it's the Piquabic, Quinnipiac, and there's a couple out in the western end of the state.
Well, the Piquabic River flows into the Farmington River. The Quinnipiac just comes from the top of the mountain and heads south.
Yep, goes into the Long Island Sound.
Yeah. The Piquabic River is one of the few rivers that run north. Pardon me. Well, I've been a homeowner for, oh, since 1970. I was in the Navy, and I bought, well, 1971, I bought a house. I remember, and I've got a pretty sharp mind, I remember my sewer bill was $17 a year, you know? And it's amazing how inflation can cripple us, you know? So at any rate, I probably still have the bill, so I can prove it. So that's it. I don't have anything more to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else want to speak to the public hearing? Art, Joanne, you'll be next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Arthur Screen, 5 Cornell Street. Got a shock recently, paying my first sewer bill ever in the Town of Plainville with the move. And I got to tell you, my chin dropped because based on what I'm paying Valley Water for water, I'm going to average about $225 a year in water. That was one shock. The second shock was, it's costing me $180 more to flush my toilet per year than it is to drink the water out of the faucet. That's insane that the cost to dispose of the water is that much more. And it's also insane that I, living by myself, am paying the same amount as a family of five in the Town of Plainville because the minimum charge. I don't think that's fair. But John talks about the increases in the sewer rates. What John doesn't talk about is the fact that the increases in the sewer rates for projects like this have been going on since 1998 or sooner. Because Bob Jackson, the town manager at the time, when the previous plant was recommended to be done and the state mandated nitrogen removal, he increased the sewer rates in anticipation of this project coming on. Now, a few years ago, with the anticipation of now phosphorus removal from the DEP being mandated, the town again increased the sewer rates. They've never gone down. We spent $25.5 million for a plant that just went online eight years ago? Not even eight years ago? And now the state's mandating we do upgrades for phosphorus? That at the time, we, as the building committee, asked them, is there something else coming down the line? Because we're spending $25.5 million. We don't want to have to touch this plant for 30 years. And here we are, less than 10 years later, looking at spending $15 million? You know what my reaction to the DEP would be? Screw you! I'd turn to Governor Malloy and say the same thing. You just cut our budget $1.8 million that we got to try and make up after sending the tax bills out, and now you want to suspend $15 million for quoting the brochure I got with my sewer bill? It will make the Piquabic River cleaner and more sustainable to aquatic life and enhance the Town of Plainville. Cost-benefit analysis, is it really worth $15 million to make the fish in the river more comfortable? What's next after phosphorus? They made us remove nitrogen, now they're making us remove phosphorus. What's next? Tell them, screw you! We're tired of spending the money. Our people are paying way too much for wastewater removal now. A lot of the stuff I saw in this public hearing notice, why are we putting in an emergency generator? We put one in during the $25 million plant project. Why is, I wasn't able to attend the presentation, but, you know, we have an equalization of flow tank. We were told back then, we didn't need one. Now, all of a sudden, we need one. I think there's a lot of, I think a lot of what's in here that's being proposed to be put in needs to go to the North Pole for Santa. It's a wish list. It's a Christmas list for the operators down there. There's some stuff in there that I think should have been taken care of through operational budgets over the years to maintain the plant. There's a lot of stuff in here that has absolutely nothing to do with the mandate from the state for phosphorus removal. This project is bloated in what's being put in, in my opinion. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. I didn't go to that meeting that you had, the special meeting, but good for those that did go. And in thinking about the high cost of this, it comes to me that possibly, could some of this money be used from the piggy bank that we have? In other words, it has many names, piggy bank, slush fund, unassigned funds, but can't some of that money be taken from there and used?
No, that can't happen, Joanne.
You can't, okay.
You know, just a very brief, very quick explanation is that our water pollution control fund is very separate from our general fund. Their funding is different. It's completely separate from the mill rate. It's not the same at all, so we cannot transfer monies between our general fund over to that fund. That has to stand alone. It was set up many decades ago, and that's how it has to operate.
All right. I understand. All right. But, you know, it's getting so that, like I say, the people are being squeezed so that, you know, it's getting almost impossible to live in a house for some, especially with families. Hard to put food on the table, pay the rent, pay the mortgage. And if there's any way to lower the cost of this, I like that expression, "Screw the government." That was in that wonderful movie, Legend of a Fall. Screw the government. I love it. That's not for, it really, the people are just being squeezed to death. And there's a possibility that we're going to be assessed 4.2% extra because of the backlash from the budget, state budget, that is assessed to this town, almost $2 million, and we're going to be assessed for 4.2% higher taxes. Now, that's something that should come from the piggy bank. That's something that should come for, that source of money for a rainy day, be used to help the people. And that, I want you to think very seriously about that. Do you know, in a recent copy of the Hartford Current, in the real estate section, there are 21 homes in Plainville that are in foreclosure, and how many others are just simply for sale? So people are exiting. It's going to be even more of an exodus if people can't afford to live here. So think about it. Find a way to make it a little easier on everybody.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anybody else that hasn't spoken? All right. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Move on to the next item. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 20th meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 20th, 2017 regular meeting.
I have a second.
Second.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any announcements and reports tonight?
I attended the monthly fire company meeting this past Friday night, where they held their annual election of officers, and I just want to report on who was elected. For Captain Kurt Plord was reelected, First Lieutenant Dave Massey, and lieutenants in this order, Tim Lennon, Bill Gammon, John Misca, and Paul Brusso. Al Call was reelected as secretary, and Phil Brusso as assistant secretary, Mark Cahill as treasurer, and Ray Moreau as assistant treasurer. And then Tony Labella was elected to the code of conduct, and Dave Mazzarri as an alternate. It is their annual meeting of elections, and their positions are pretty much the same. So just wanted to update everybody on that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report? I'll just briefly announce that I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony, I guess it is, at the Plainville Community Pharmacy this past Friday. It's a new independent pharmacy, and I met the new pharmacist and the new owner. She seems very pleasant. She has a true desire to serve the community in a way which is a little bit more personalized and individualized than the major chains such as Walgreens, CVS, and those types of places that folks go to for their pharmaceuticals and prescription drugs. She's very eager to meet people in Plainville and encourage people to come in and say hello to her. So we do have a new business in town. It's located in a building that used to be a pharmacy some years ago, which had not stayed in business, and she's very nice. So if you're interested to go in and speak to her and see what she's doing there, that would be, that would be a good thing if you want to deal on a one-on-one relationship rather than dealing with a major corporate change. So she was happy to be here. If there are no other announcements and reports, we will move on to appointments and resignations. We have one tonight. There you have it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint Danny Carrier, 270 Camp Street, to the Capitol Project Building Committee for the term ending August 1st, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments or reappointments to boards and commissions tonight? Okay. Thank you. Report of our town attorney, Attorney Mastiani. Hello?
Good evening.
Do you have anything for us tonight?
I just have one matter for executive session, ma'am.
For the town manager, I guess, Robert, it's your turn.
I have a couple of items. The first item is remedial action and redevelopment municipal grant award for 1 West Main Street and 63 West Main Street. The town was recently notified that the Department of Economic and Community Development has awarded a $200,000 grant for funding under the remedial action and redevelopment municipal grant program. These monies will be used to perform a Phase 1, 2, and 3 environmental study for the White Oak property located on 14-plus acres in the center of Plainville. The town currently has an option to purchase the property for the value of the back taxes, which currently stands at $660,000. Once the extent of the contamination is known, the town may be able to access cleanup grants as well. The next step could be to acquire the property and market it to developers once it is cleaned up. To date, the unknowns related to the potential site contamination has resulted in the property To date, the unknowns related to the potential site contamination has resulted in the property remaining vacant for many years. To date, the property, the property value currently is assessed at $1.07 million, which exceeds the taxes owed by a wide margin. However, potential buyers are unwilling to take the risk of developing the property because of the lack of environmental information due to its prior use as a construction yard. So, I think that's relatively good news in terms of being able to find out more about this property and to make it more viable, hopefully, as a potential development opportunity. Next item I have is the Dog Park Public Hearing, January 2nd, 2018. Town staff is recommending that the town council schedule a public hearing to receive comments on the Dog Park Committee's recommendation to allow them to use town-owned land located at the end of Norton Place Extension for the use as a dog park. If permission is granted by the town council, the Dog Park Committee will then begin their fundraising efforts to pay for the development of the land into a dog park. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation regarding conducting a public hearing. Next item I have entitled Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. In response to statements made at the last several town council meetings regarding the proposed Farmington Canal Trail, I asked Town Planner Mark DeVoe to respond to some of the comments that were made. He provided a memo dated November 30th, 2017, a copy of which was provided to the town council as part of this evening's meeting. Mr. DeVoe noted comments suggesting a lack of compliance with the Town's Plan of Conservation and Development. The comments that were made indicated that the plan states that environmentally sensitive areas, areas of historic significance, open space, and areas of natural beauty should be protected, and further that it recommends preserving and managing residential neighborhoods. Persons have suggested that the proposed trail would adversely affect these attributes. Mark's response was that a thoughtful trail design can enhance both public and natural spaces. A trail can highlight areas where scenic overlooks and nature can be enjoyed without causing harmful adverse impacts. Historic features can be showcased and protected for generations in lieu of allowing them to continue to slowly decay. Additionally, he noted that neighborhoods can be improved through safety enhancements, aesthetic improvements, and traffic calming, which is a common element of trail design. As the principal staff member and director of planning, during this plan formulation, this is Mark's professional opinion that in more respects than not, an appropriate trail design will help further the recommendations of the Plan of Conservation and Development. He noted that there are 14 pages within the plan, some with multiple mentions per page, where the trail is encouraged as a vital resource the town should pursue. The Plan of Conservation and Development clearly recommends construction of a trail as a priority. A thoughtful review of the plan would reveal this to any reader. Several residents have noted their concerns regarding the possible impacts to environmentally sensitive areas. Mark points out that there will be some impacts to the environment, however, the design will make every effort to mitigate them along every foot of the proposed trail. The town of Plainville and the state of Connecticut are not exempt from strict environmental permitting criteria and permitting laws. The law requires that measures be taken to use all reasonable and prudent measures to avoid impact, and where impacts cannot be avoided, to minimize those impacts to the greatest extent feasible. In terms of floodplain impacts, Plainville zoning regulations and FEMA guidelines and flood prevention regulations can and must effectively be adhered to throughout proper design. The trail is not a building. It's a recreational platform that is permitted within floodplains when designed and engineered correctly. People have also expressed concerns regarding the historic significance of the canal and associated hall road. Mark DeVoe noted that state historic preservation office has been consulted regarding the use of the Hall Trail. No significant concerns have been raised by the state historic preservation office about the current proposed proposal for the trail. In a Bristol Press article referenced by a recent speaker, it correctly points to the canal and associated Hall Trail as a historic amenity that should be saved. Mark points out that this is the goal of the steering committee as well. He goes on to say that multi-use trail design process has accomplished just that in other community communities. It also points out that Ms. Ruth Hummel, former president of the Plainville Historic Center, fought to have a trail constructed alongside the remnants of the Farmington Canal at the Pine Meadow condominium project in a manner that respected the canal and highlighted its historic significance. The future design phase for this project will accomplish the same, but to a greater degree. There is no doubt that awareness of the historic canal will be raised while helping to preserve it from the slow erosion of time. Mr. DeVoe concludes his memo by stating that the first and foremost consideration of the trail design is safety. Trails have been designed and constructed in neighborhoods, and he pointed out that they have reviewed many examples during the presentation. An appropriate design can be, can make an effective and sometimes stark improvements to the appearance of the street. Further with respect to Pierce Street, town of Plainville representatives have repeatedly stated that there are no plans to make this road into a one-way street. Finally, he says that the plan is conceptual only. The concerns raised to date are premature, and its assessment of how the trail will affect an environment in all forms stated. A final design will be chosen based upon how it best marries safety with aesthetics. The Plan of Conservation and Development clearly places construction of the trail near the top of its list of priorities. It is the purpose of the design, not the planning phase, to ensure that measures to mitigate or remove impacts are implemented. I have a copy of that letter and respond to some of the comments from the previous council meetings. With that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to Scott for happenings, and then respond to any questions or comments you may have.
For Public Works, the town's transfer station on Granger Lane will be closing for the winter season on Saturday, December 9th, 2017, at 3:00 p.m. Moving on to the senior center, the State of Connecticut Energy Assistance Program is available to income-eligible residents to help assist in lowering winter heating costs. For more information or to see if you're eligible, call the HRA Energy Department at Residents must apply every year for this program. Tomorrow morning at 10:30 a.m. is the Veterans Coffee Hour. Jason Kupla, the Veterans Service Officer from the Office of Advocacy and Assistance in Waterbury, will share how he and his colleagues are available to help veterans in securing their benefits, and this is available for all veterans over the age of 60 and their spouses. And on Monday, December 11th, at 10 a.m., they are hosting a legislative coffee hour with State Senator Henry Martin and State Representative William A. Pettit. They invite you to come and speak to them about the upcoming legislative session. Any other statewide issues important to you can also be discussed. This event is free and open to the public. Please call the senior center to sign up beginning on Tuesday, December 5th. Moving on to the public library, the Tuesday Night Book Club will meet on Tuesday, December 5th, at 7:00 p.m. to discuss "Best State Ever: A Florida Man Defends His Homeland" by Dave Barry. On Saturday, December 9th, at 1:00 p.m., the Children's Department will be holding a gift-making-for-children program. On Saturday, December 9th, at 2:00 p.m., the Plainville Flute Ensemble will be performing during the Holiday Stroll. And the library's monthly great discussion series concludes on Tuesday, December 12th, at 7:00 p.m. The group discusses America's foreign policy in a balanced, nonpartisan way and encourages citizens to understand and participate in the foreign policy process. The topic for this one is Latin America's political pendulum. On Tuesday, December 12th, at 6:30, Gail Farrar will host her yearly shellcraft-making event. Registration is required. And on Wednesday, December 13th, at 6:30 p.m., the Children's Department will be making candy houses. The Plainville Police Department has scheduled its eighth annual Stuff a Plainville Police Cruiser with Gifts for Saturday, December 9th, from 10 a.m. to 9 p.m. at the Connecticut Common Shopping Plaza. New unwrapped toys, clothes, gifts, cards, and donations will benefit the local chapter of the Salvation Army. Off-duty Plainville officers plan to staff the event and collect donations from the public. And just a reminder that on Friday, December 8th, at 5:00 p.m., the town tree lighting ceremony will take place at the Plainville Fire Company's, Plainville Firehouse. And this event is sponsored by the town of Plainville, the Plainville Fire Company, and the Holiday Stroll, which will take place on Friday, December 8th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., and Saturday, December 9th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., is sponsored by the Plainville Merchants. All of this information has been provided online under the happenings page, as well as the flyers for the tree lighting ceremony.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Robert, for your comments. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Scott with their reports? Nothing. Good job, Ben.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Next, we'll move on to our public comments section. During this section of the meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium. I understand our audio system is working very nicely this week, so you should be heard clearly. Please state your name and address. You will be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. You're with me. Madam Chair, I read in last week's local newspaper that $705,000 had been reduced from the Wheeler Elementary School renovate as new project in order to qualify for funding. The reason being, the current size of the school exceeds requirements needed for a new building, which I thought was kind of unusual, but that's the way it is. Based on that, I would, I would have thought that this would have been part of the town council meeting report by the town manager, and I'm kind of surprised it wasn't brought up. My question regarding this subject is, is the project funding, is the project funding reduced from the state's reimbursement or for the estimated cost to Plainville?
My understanding, it's from the cost of the, the total cost of the project has been reduced by that amount.
Yes, ma'am, but what, what portion of? There's two portions to it, the town and then the state's reimbursement. Which one is going to be impacted?
It's, it's going to come off, it's going to come off the total project cost that the town has put out there. The project had to be reduced-
I'm sorry, bear with me on this.
...in order to qualify for the funding.
Let me just, please bear with me on this.
Okay.
All right. According to this sheet, okay, Wheeler School Elementary, estimated state reimbursement, Estimated net cost to Plainville, $11,408. Which one of those two numbers is going to be hit by the $705?
Okay, I'm going to have to refer to the town manager just to give you the right information.
Fine.
Both of them. Total project cost will be reduced, state reimbursement will be reduced, the town's cost will be reduced.
Okay. If the state's reimbursement is reduced, I thought it was said by the town council in the previous group that if a penny was taken away from the state reimbursement, we would stop the project.
Well, if the project is reduced, then the state's reimbursement is going to be reduced.
No, that isn't what I'm saying, ma'am.
Oh.
They said if the state reduced, if the state reduced its input, the project would I am not making this up, and I'm not trying to create a problem.
I understand what you're saying.
All I'm saying is, this is what I heard to the prior town council.
We haven't gotten the total amount, the percentage amount that we're, we don't have that exact number yet, Mr. Frangos, but because we're reducing the scope of the project, obviously, the reimbursement amount is going to be reduced by a similar amount. Is there a more clear way to state that?
A more clear way to state that would be that the Plainville taxpayers will be in a better position as a result of the project being lowered, even if the state reimbursement goes down to the same amount of money. So, the bottom line is that the Plainville taxpayers are in a better position today than they were yesterday.
All right. With that said, thank you. What will be impacted by the fund reduction? What is going to be taken out?
It's yet to be determined, but the, but the architects feel that they can design the building that will meet the lower construction costs without impacting program.
So, in essence, we don't know yet. When the engineers figure it out, or the designers will be ready. Okay. What will, finally, for this question, when will the necessary up-to-date student projections be submitted to the Department of Administrative Services so the project will be put in a fund priority listing?
Funding priority listing. Does the town council know that, or does that have to come from the BOE?
Was submitted today.
It was submitted today?
This day. I would like to point out that this, this reduction in the, in the school project was reported to the council at their last town council meeting.
I'm sorry, did you say, I'm sorry?
You made a comment earlier that this should have been brought to the town council. It was brought to the town council at their last town council meeting, that the project was being reduced. The November 20th meeting, it was, it was brought to the town council.
Okay, all I'm, to follow your lead, all I'm saying is, I saw it in the paper last week, and I thought it would have been part of this town council meeting report. That's all I'm saying.
It was in the paper because it was talked about at the last council meeting.
My fault, then, I'm sorry. Take it easy.
Are you almost, your time has expired. I know there's been a lot of back and forth, but do you have a summary?
I'll just sit down.
No, you're good?
Yeah, that's up to you.
I'll give you a couple more seconds.
All right, I'll take it.
You've kind of used up your time.
Let me just put it, all right, thank you very much for that. Just this closing comment. Madam Chair, a thought crossed my mind after reading tonight's town council meeting agenda. The town council is being asked to consider an ordinance appropriating in excess of $15 million for upgrades and related improvements to the water pollution control facility which services the entire town of Plainville. And with that said, imagine a state reimbursement and Plainville's net cost in excess of $22 million being required to renovate an old building whose students' body barely exceeds 300 students. And I, I'm sorry, I don't want to open up old wounds, but I find that it's kind of shocking. $15 million deserves the entire town, and we're going to spend $22 million for not even 300 students. It's just the way it is. And, and because of you, thank you very much. One more thing, too. I would just hope the town council, if I may say, okay, I'm sorry.
No, you can just say-
Okay, I'm-
-a couple of words, and then we're going to have to close, okay?
And this will be quick.
Because I get in trouble if I let people go too long.
And I understand that, and I thank you. I thank you for that.
All right.
The only thing I, again, I mentioned this at a prior meeting, and I'm going to reinsert it, I repeated it again today. There's trails, rails to trails, trails to rails, whatever this thing is. All I would ask, and I asked at the prior time, and I'm asking it again, you see a map with lines going in different directions, and everybody says, "This is safe, that's not safe, this is this." There are people being impacted. My only thing that I would present to the town council is, when it's said and done in the direction it's going to go, I would hope every member of this town council takes the time to either walk or drive that location and actually visually see what they're going to be producing, and that's before they vote. And that's all I ask, and thank you for your patience and time.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Joel Edmond, 63 Holly Berry Lane. If they're going to, they're going to walk the trail over 5.3 miles, they better wear boots, because a lot of it's wet, going to have to cross streams. But, at any rate, I'm going to attempt to finish what I started one month ago tonight. So, continuing from what they are saying, it sounds like some people, especially the town manager and town council, have unrealistic expectations about the benefits of closing the trail gap through Plainville. As far as closing the gap, would the state of Connecticut object to the trail going down Route 10? If not, why not? That's only another reason to drop this entire trail idea. Plainville is already cluttered. I forgot to mention the airport, two quarries, one of which is abandoned for the time being, and four or five town and state parks. You would think that trail people would want to avoid all that and get through Plainville as quickly as possible or avoid it completely due to the air- as quickly as possible, or avoid it completely, due to the air noise pollution, busy roads, and intersections, possibly a dark underground tunnel, and, excuse me, and how many bridges to cross over, rather than take the more scenic route through taxpaying people's front and backyards and streets. And, people with cars and trucks don't always stop to allow people to cross. There will be a cost, if not sooner than later, not only to maintain and police, but also to replace pavement and rebuild bridges over rivers and streams. We all know how long fences last. Just because the federal government and/or practically bankrupt state of Connecticut is to pay for it does not mean it is cost-free. I pay town, state, and federal taxes, and I happen to feel that I do not want my taxpayer money wasted on something we don't need. This trail closure dilemma reminds me of Tom Hanks in a movie where he relates that life is like a box of assorted chocolates. You never know what you are about to get. I doubt if it's going to be Amazon. The subject of fencing was brought up recently, and how fences will protect us from waters coming down the trail. If something is about to attack me, I want to be able to see it. I also do not want my property to be closed in by a stupid fence. There is a saying about being sold a bill of goods. I'm not buying it. No rail, no trail. I'm a victim in the past of buying a white elephant. Fortunately, the wind blew it off my roof, and all I was saddled with was the debt. Some people do learn from past mistakes. A few more people coming into town, eat or shop, does not equate to the trails and tribulations this trial will cause to hundreds and hundreds of innocent people along the way. That's a deliberate pun on words. Think about it. You have a relatively few people trying to propose a highly impactful trail that most people don't want through a small town that is already overpopulated. I hear a lot of talk lately of people wanting to move out of town. They don't like what they are hearing and also seeing in town. This trail closure gap is sort of like a trial, where the innocent person or persons pays a fine and maybe goes to jail. They're calling it a trail, but really, it is a road, maybe only 10 feet wide. Don't we have enough of them already in Plainville? And there is nothing that's attractive or pretty about it, and it will be dangerous. I hope that more people will wake up and visualize what may just be coming their way. The town manager wants it, the town council has already admitted that they tend to want it. Sounds like the judge and jury, to me, could possibly have their way, and it is so idiotic and evasive to so many people-
Mr. Edman, are you almost done?
Negatively impacted, I'm on the last page.
Well, you've expired your time, so I'm just asking if you could summarize it.
Well, this would be the third time I got shut down.
If you could summarize it, I'd appreciate it.
We should have five minutes here.
We have three, and-
Yeah, well, obviously, it hasn't been enough for three times that I've been up here.
Okay.
Some of the people that have already objected to this trail have verbally done so, and if they had a lot more to say, they were shushed by the council chair. It happened to me this past Monday night at the town meeting. That three-minute ruling was designed to keep us taxpayers quiet. It appears that the council does not want to listen. They won't admit to that, by the way. This trail is by no means an evacuation route. There is a lot quicker way to get out of town. Has anybody noticed how congested the roads are during the commute to and from work? We have to put up with the trains because they benefit our commerce. We don't have to put up with the probable trail congestion. This trail gap closure will be forever, long after you and I have expired. Some of our houses will be devalued when it is time to sell because of it. I repeat, no rail, no trail. I rest my case. God bless you all.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Gail?
Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue. I'd just like to say that I love the trails. I've used the Simsbury Trail, the Avon Trail, the Farmington Trail, just a little bit of the Suddington Trail. The Cheshire Trail, I've done, um, on my rollerblades. I've done 11 miles in two hours. Years ago, um, when I, I was living out in Hartford, I rode my bike from Hartford to Winstead. I started out at 3:00 in the afternoon, and then I had to call my parents to come get me because it was dark, and they live away out in Canaan. So, I like, I like my exercise. Right now, I have to drive out of town, and eventually, I won't be able to drive because, for medical reasons, I won't be able to drive, and I can't rollerblade anymore because I broke my ankle. And, um, the Farmington and the Unionville Trails are really nice. They have increased home values. The people you see on the trail are not going to like, I mean, honestly, most of us are decent. If we see, if we see somebody doing something bad, most of us will call self, will have carry cell phones, and we will call the police. And, um, I've ne, I've met more nasty people out, you know, and, and I don't like the idea of going on Route 10 with all the traffic. I just, I don't like it. And that's, I'm gonna be relying on my bicycle in the future. So, um, you know, it's just, I don't think the people that are complaining about it have even been on it. And most of the people that are complaining, I said this to Joanne, and I apologize, I still feel the same way, but the thing is, I feel like all the people that are complaining are very unhealthy and have never used a trail. Trail makes you healthier. You walk, you get your exercise, um, you get away, it's nice, you hear the birds. Simsbury has a lovely area where you can walk through where there's wetlands. It's lovely. Um, and it's, I've, I've gone all the way up to North Hampton to rollerblade, and, um, I go where, you know, I hate it that it can't rollerblade. It's much more fun, it just is much more fun. But at any rate, it's, it'll make you healthy. And like I said, most of the time, the rates go up. You know, in Avon, and Simsbury, and Farmington, people didn't complain about that. They didn't complain. Plainville seems to be the complaining town. I, I just, I don't hear people in other towns complaining like this. It's, um, they don't have anything to do when they retire, so they complain. And that's just my own opinion, after living here for 20 years. So, but get out and take, take the trail. Have a, a group of the seniors take the trail. It would be excellent. A bus could take you over there. It's wonderful. It would be wonderful. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Gail. Roberta, you had your hand up?
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. Thank you very much for your time this evening. For the benefit of Scott, and for the minutes, I would like to reiterate what I have said numerous times before. I oppose any trail or alignment that will have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville, particularly Perrin Road, Johnson Avenue, and the back of the homes on the even side of Perrin Road. As I have said before, and have been saying since June, if there are no rails, there should be no trails. I have a question for the members of the town council. There have been dozens of people that have come in front of you at these meetings in opposition of this trail by this private steering committee. My question is very sincere and very simple. What do you want from the residents to help you better understand the importance of saying and voting no on this project?
Um, are you looking for a response from everybody, Roberta?
Yes, ma'am. I really want to understand, people have been coming here for months. People have been coming here with facts, with information, to help you better understand. I want to know what I have to do. The residents of Perrin Road want to know what they have to do. From Pier Street, they want to know what they have to do. Holly Berry Lane, they want to know what they have to do. So, please, help me to help you. What do you want from us?
I, I can't think of a specific idea that I could say I would want from you. I certainly need to look at the final design elements of this project to understand it. So, there is more work to be done, but from, from what you've said, I understand your concerns. I understand how you feel about your neighborhood. I understand how Pier Street feels about their neighborhood, but I've yet to see a final design component.
Okay. My other question is, the information you received from Mark DeVoe this evening, when will that letter and information be available to the public?
Um, we could have it put on the website, the town website for you, not for you, but for the public, so that you would have access to it.
That would be great.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you.
And as a side note, um, in response to this individual, I have been involved in trails with my son for over a decade. I'm very familiar with individuals from the DEEP. I've worked with them, we've been involved in some things here for the residents of this town, so I'm extremely familiar with trails and things that go on. The good, the bad, and the ugly.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Teresa Andrioli, 16 Perrin Road. I just want to state that I oppose the trail has currently is been proposed, uh, showed to us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken? Mr. Spencer?
I'd like to address the, um, the implementation of public nursery school pre-K, so it's called. We were told by the superintendent of schools that there would be a $100 a month fee per child or family to, to be enrolled in the school, which works out to $25 a week, which is very, very cheap for a preschool. My understanding is, it's never been implemented. In fact, um, I, I believe it's been waived. And, um, why? I mean, why do, why were we told one thing, and then when it comes time to implement it, suddenly, the Board of Education is just creeping a little bit more and more into us?
Um, yeah, I, I would suspect that that question is more appropriate for the Board of Education than the town council-
Well, you, you-
-because they make their own policies in terms of their programming. So, I don't know why that was either said at one point and not implemented, or if it's going to be implemented. That would certainly be something that could be obtained from them.
My understanding is that the town council has a little bit more power over the funding of the Board of Education.
Um, not, not particularly. I mean, we certainly approve a budget. That includes funding for the Board of Education. As far as how they can spend that, it is not for us to say. I have no, I have never seen a proposal from the Board of Ed regarding a $100 per month fee myself, so this is something I'm not aware of, Mr. Spencer. Maybe we need to follow up with them a little more closely.
Yes, maybe you, maybe you do need to, um-
Is there a letter sent out? I mean, I'm curious how you found out about this. Well, how did you learn of this topic? Because I'm not aware.
Um, I know of people who have complained to the Board of Ed about it, saying that they had already, they had already paid enough taxes without having this larger fee, and my understanding is the Board of Education agreed with them, and, um-
Okay, I'm, I've not seen that.
Well, the whole, the whole idea of public pre-K is kind of, to me, it's just another creeping, step-by-step attack on the taxpayer. I know the superintendent has quoted, to me anyway, of a, a study where, for every $1 invested in pre-K, $7 is returned to the community, which is, um, which is a lie. I mean, if anybody's believing that, you've been conned. When President Obama tried to quote that, The Washington Post, which protected him and defended him every step of the way for eight years, gave him two Pinocchios out of four. Studies, studies on Head Start have shown that whatever advantage pre-K gives kids, it's gone, entirely gone by the third grade. And, I mean, we started with no pre-K. Then suddenly, there was like this experimental program where, you know, I mean, it sounded kind of cool to me, that, I, I think kids with problems, or kids with, you know, autistic kids, and some of the kids without the problems were matched up, you know, for, I think, a two- or three-day-a-week program, half a day. And, I mean, okay, I mean, that sounded like a pretty cool idea to me. Next, we have a three-day pre, pre-K. Then we got a five-day pre-K, now we got a full-day pre-K. And, and these are four-year-old kids. You think they can handle a six, six-hour school day? I mean, um, some of them are pretty exhausted by the end of thi, this day. I mean, they're not built for a six-hour day. And, um, I, I think it needs to be revisited. Why is the public, why is the taxpayer gonna be responsible for funding a pre-K which has no results in the long run by the third grade? And, um, I mean, this finance, this so-called financial, I, I don't know where the study came from, probably a teachers' union or something, but the $1 invested for $7 return is not the truth. And, you know, we really, I mean, we're gonna have to buckle down at some point. I know that the state is removing some funding this year, and they're promising more next year. You better not count your chickens before they hatch, because whatever they're promising next year is next year, and when next year rolls around, um, that might, that money that they're saying is gonna be there now might not be. So, I, I think, it's getting to the point where we gotta start looking at things. And I think this pre-K thing needs to be revisited, and, you know, it's, there, it's, the Board of Education is entrenching it so deeply that I don't think we're gonna be able to do that, and, you know, the heck with the taxpayer.
Well, um, what I can say, Mr. Spencer, is, not to prolong your discussion, because you've gone a little bit over your time, and that's okay. Those are provocative questions that you're asking, and I think the best answer to those is to go to the source, which would be the Board of Education, our superintendent, and try to get some of the understanding from them as to why they are continuing with programs that you feel are not beneficial to students and are too expensive. So, I really do, with all sincerity, encourage you to go to them and have the same conversation that you had with us.
Okay, but you do have power over the budget.
Um, to a degree.
To a degree?
We formulate a budget, but how it gets spent is not in our purview.
Okay, yeah, well, you have-
So, I think these are questions that really need to be answered by the Board of Ed, and by the superintendent, and their staff in order to fully understand that.
So, if, I mean, if the council decides the Board of Education is spending a little bit too much money, you don't have power to, to do anything?
Not once it's approved.
Okay.
The council only has control over the bottom-line number of the Board of Education.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The council only has, uh, power over the bottom-line budget number of the, of the Board of Education. Once that's been established, the board can spend that money- Once that's been established, the board can spend that money any way they choose.
Well, you can always reduce that bottom line.
After it's been approved.
Well, you just said you had power over the bottom line.
And once the bottom line's established, it can't be changed. The bottom line has been set for this particular year, the bottom line...
Well, I know this year, but I'm thinking into the future. I'd love to see a reverse course on this pre-K thing. It's not a benefit.
Just telling you...
Except the teachers' unions and unions.
Okay, that's your opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet? Marilyn?
Marilyn Sherrett, 18 Milfristree. Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Members of the community. I'll be very brief. I'm not going to use my three minutes.
Well, you'd be the first tonight.
I know. But that's a good thing. In the past, I've brought up the question about the liability and maintenance of this trail. And to date, I still haven't had an answer from anybody. But that being said, someone beat me to it. I wanted to know if I can get a copy of Mr. DeVoe's report. And thirdly, a long time ago, I proposed, since there's so much dismay about the direction of this trail, Framington Avenue is a very historic road. Broad Street is a historic road. And then we can go right down South Washington Street, through the park, back on to South Washington. And it would save so much money, and it would save so much distress that's being caused by this whole thing, by all of these property owners. And I'm not one of the victims. And I'm calling them victims, because right now, that's the way it seems to me, that nobody's listening to how they're feeling and how it's going to affect them personally. And I would really like to see you consider the possibility of going right down Framington Avenue. It's a very simple route. And actually, part of it is already marked out, if you look at it. And it's not going to affect anybody here, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I was under the three minutes.
Yes, you did. Thank you for that. Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. I was going to read the prayer tonight, but I'll forego it, because I'm going to stick to the sticky trail issue. It is an issue. It's not happy trails ahead, like that wonderful song that Roy Rogers and the Sons of the Pioneers sang. I know those words pretty much, but I won't sing them tonight. What we... What I'd like to know... We have two newcomers on the beat. And I would like tonight to find out how they feel individually, because the rest of you have been polled, and you were all sitting on the fence, each and every one of you. So, I want to know what the two newcomers... How they... Do they... Are they for it or against it? And may I ask them individually?
It's going to be certainly up to the individuals. I, Joanne, prefer not to have councilpeople polled at a meeting such as this.
Well, since the rest of them, the rest of you were, then I think the two newcomers should be polled.
We were, and the rest of us have had a lot more time to read and digest all the information regarding this trail. So, it's a little bit... This, and it's not to their advantage, but I would certainly leave it up to them. If they want to respond, they can, but they're certainly not required. There's more information that's coming about this trail as it develops. So, there's no final decision on this yet.
Well, you've heard plenty from the people that are involved and affected. And it has been...
I understand that.
A lot of information, feedback to you as to how they feel about it. It is invasive and intrusive to neighborhoods and to individuals. So, it's not a good thing. But I would like to know what Mr. Cox, how Mr. Cox feels. I'd like to know if he is for it or against it. Can you answer that, Mr. Cox?
Mr. Cox, it's up to you to answer. You can certainly wait and get more information, and it's your call.
Joanne, I certainly think that, right now, saying that I am for or against it is very black and white. I do think that the trail has many benefits. We are going... There is no set plan in stone here. We are doing another meeting and a walkthrough of the proposed trail, where we will all go and look at it together. That being said, right now, we aren't going to be polled up here, as the chairwoman said.
See, you're on the fence. How about you, Mr. Nazo?
I'm somebody who's used the trail in other towns many times. I want us to find a way to close the gap. I do not have an opinion on the current trail alignment. I haven't done enough research on it. I do look forward to us getting out and taking a look at it. I understand people don't want this in their backyard. I completely understand that. But we need to find the best amendable solution for everyone involved. And honestly, at this point, I just can't tell you where I stand on the proposed trail alignment. But I would like for us very much to find a way to close the trail gap.
Well, thank you for your opinion, but I wanted either a yes or no. And for all of you, I do not believe that each and every one of you would like it in your front yard or your backyard. Would you?
No, and mine, I would be okay with that.
I've told the town manager, if it was on Welch Street, I'd be quite happy.
I didn't hear that, Kathy.
He said, "I would be okay with that trail, in front of my house or in back of my house."
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, you know where I live, Joanne. You're the leader of the... They have to put a lovely sidewalk in front of my house to do this.
Right, yeah, okay.
I would not mind.
Yeah, well, maybe there'd be a murder in front of your house, too.
Oh, come on, Joanne.
I don't know. We had murders on the trail. It's not the Orient Express it's going through. It's the trail.
All right. Joanne, you have another 10 seconds?
It's the trail. So, I really think... Now, I know that the trail birds are coming next Town Council meeting. I know they're coming. So, it's like they're coming again to do the dog and pony show and shove this down, and try to shove this down the throats of the people of Plainville. And it would behoove people that are affected by this to please come out and fight. Thank God, Roberta comes every time. I'm sure Kathy Labella would have been here tonight, if she could have been. But the people on these streets must come out. Where's Broad Street? Where's Hemingway? The residents, where are the residents? They've got to come out. Otherwise, they're going to have it... They're going to have... I want to know how you're going to do this trail? You're going to put fencing up in front of the people's houses?
Joanne, you've really expired your time.
How is this going to look?
We'll let you know as soon as the final design is ready.
Well, I hope people ask these questions when they come up.
You'll be the first. Okay, thank you.
Time in our...
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet tonight? Anybody? Andrea?
Good evening. Andrea Saunders, 55 Fawn Drive. If I may, I would just like to address Mr. Spencer's concern about pre-K. That's okay?
Of course.
Mr. Spencer, from what I understand, yes, we did implement a $100 policy fee to charge parents where their kids are in pre-K. I am not aware that that's not being collected. I will be happy to get the information to the superintendent, and either her or I would be happy to get back to you. And as the chairwoman said, we have a meeting next Monday at 7:00. Please feel free to come and speak to the superintendent and the board at that point. We'll be happy to hear from you. And I am also not aware, I go to every meeting, that there's never been one parent that's come to our meeting and formally complained about it. They may be doing it on the phone by calling central office, but they've not come to our meetings. But we'll be happy to get you the correct information and let you know, if that's okay with you.
Well, the information I have is not incorrect. I'm not going to mention names.
I'm not asking you, I'm not asking you to.
It's very difficult to have a back and forth, because you're not being picked up. But maybe after the minute, you could speak to Mrs. Saunders, and you guys could work out those details. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody? Art?
Just like the old days, like, listen, and I can't keep my mouth shut. Arthur Screen, 62 Roberts Street Extension... I'm sorry, 5 Cornell Street.
Honestly, 62 Roberts Street doesn't exist anymore.
Did you move back there? No.
Sometimes I'd like to. One thing I want to touch on is, Mr. Spencer talked about a study about the effects of preschool disappearing by grade three. I did extensive research many, many years ago. I believe the study he's referencing actually talks about all-day kindergarten as opposed to universal pre-K. That study was done probably 25 years ago, I would say. Where, when they compared half-day kindergarten to all-day kindergarten, and then followed the kids by age three, the people that went to half-day kindergarten and full-day kindergarten were equal in their advancement in knowledge and so forth, in their performance. So, the effects of all-day kindergarten disappeared at three, not universal pre-K.
At grade three?
At grade three, yeah. I read something, looking at the agenda. Once again, my curiosity got me in trouble, and I'm probably going to stir up a hornet's nest with this one. But I happened to click on the Aviation Commission minutes for their last meeting in November. And I have to raise the question so that it's on your radar. The Aviation Commission is talking about a 1,500-foot extension to the runway. And based on where I believe this trail is going, how does that coordinate with the trail? And if we're going to be doing one, shouldn't we be coordinating it with the other? Now, I know this trail and this runway are not going to be built next year. They're not going to be built this year. Even if the study that's going on right now picks a path that you want to design, now you have to pay somebody to design it. And it's going to be at least two or three years for them to design it and go through review to get approved. And then it's got to go through environmental processes. This trail is not going to be built anytime in the near future. This trail is probably beyond 2025, before anyone's going to walk on this trail, in my opinion. I understand the concerns of the people in the neighborhoods. I agree with them. I wouldn't want it in my neighborhood. People are telling the facts when people talk about violence on the trails. Somebody was shot recently down in Hamden on the trail. There was... No, talk to the papers. Somebody was murdered up in Simsbury. There have been people mugged on the trail. You're putting it through a very desolate area that people will be going singly through that area. That's when opportunists, called criminals, take effect in those areas. I, myself, know that the people at the town of Plainville are not going to stop this trail from going through, no matter how much opposition we put up. It's too important to too many people in this town and outside this town that this 86-mile trail get completed, and we're not going to stand in the way. The state of Connecticut wants it done. Just like the state of Connecticut wants us to spend $15 million to renovate a plant that we just renovated, we're not going to stand in the state's way. They want it done, it's going to get done. Unfortunately, the people have no voice in the state or federal, and sometimes on the local level, as to what happens in our cities and towns. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken yet? Nicole?
Nicole Palmieri, 20 Julie Road. I just want to say, we contacted the assistant superintendent, and he said that they are collecting the money for pre-K. They are sending the bills to the families. Some parents have already paid in full, and others are paying monthly. So, just so everyone knows. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet? John?
John Kisslick, 65 Forestville Avenue. I think earlier I heard someone's train derailed. That's besides the point. On the financial dashboard last meeting, it was reported that we have pretty good overtime expenses because of the balloon festival and the pumpkin fest. What I'd like to know is, that money that we expend, is that reimbursed to us by those programs? Or is the town taxpayer subsidizing these two items or projects, or whatever you want to call them? Are we, as taxpayer...
I have to get that information for you. I don't know the answer.
I appreciate it. You know, I can see, like, we have a Memorial Day parade, which really is a patriotic thing that the town is all involved in. We're honoring our military and stuff, so I can understand that. And that's, I mean, the town council marches in it, the police. This is something that's our government, our form of government, and showing appreciation. But these other items, I don't feel that the taxpayers should subsidize any of this. That's my opinion. And I wish we'd look into it. If we are, I wish it would stop unless we have all expenses are covered. My next thing, last meeting, the town manager mentioned that the renters' program... It came back, and I talked to two people today who received their checks on Saturday from the state. So, the renters' program is back. So, that should put a little less pressure on the town to have to cover that whole thing, I guess. So, I just wanted to mention that. And then, for Wheeler School, I was really, really pleased when I heard, and I heard it at that last meeting, but I brought it up today, that the architect was forced to reduce that project by $705,000. My only complaint about that is, I wish the state would look into the whole project. And they only have $4 million more to go to satisfy me, because there is another $4 million in there that is unnecessary things, like Mr. Screen's talking about the wastewater treatment plant. He knows about that. He was the chairman on the last expansion that we had, so he knows about that. And I know that there's too much fluff in this Wheeler School project. I talked about it before. These children should just be taking care of what we need in that school, not all this other nonsense, enclosed courts with artificial turf in them and stuff. This is nonsense. It's a waste of our taxpayer money. They got $4 million they can play with. But like was said, not going to listen to us. Nobody's going to listen to us. And tough on property. I did some research on that. The town manager already mentioned some of the stuff, but we assessed that at over $1 million. So, we get about $35,000 a year in taxes from them. What I don't understand is why no developer already bought that, even with the possibility of some problems with it, because they have that brownstone that's been taken care of. But I don't like tax sales, and I think it's bad. I really don't like it. But I don't understand why, in this town, we had some people that probably owed $10,000, and their property was taken away. And here, we got $600,000, and it wasn't. But that's just the point I want to make, why this got to let go so far. But to me, it's a no-brainer for the town to take this property for the taxes. You're going to make money on it. You lose $35,000 a year until you get it developed and fixed up. But it's going to be good, and it's going to be good for the town. That's my opinion. That's a prime piece of property. And if the town has the opportunity, I think they should. Because I think if a developer had some extra bucks, hit the powerball, they'd buy that thing, and they'd do good with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken yet? Like, we got just about everybody in the room here tonight, so if there are no others, I will close and move on to our new business. So, we have no old business, on to the new business of the section. Item number one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Acting as a water...
Acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, motion to adopt an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Appropriating $15,761,000 for Upgrades and Related Improvements to the Town's Water Pollution Control Facility and Authorizing the Issue of Bonds and Notes to Finance the Portion of the Appropriation Not Defrayed from Grants."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, motion to adopt a resolution entitled "Resolution Establishing Referendum on Proposed Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades and Related Improvements Project Bond Ordinance."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Acting as Water Pollution Control Authority, motion to adopt a resolution entitled "Resolution Authorizing Expenditures for Conduct of Referenda on Proposed Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades and Related Improvements Project Bond Ordinance."
Second.
Is that the same thing? Is that the same?
No.
No, they're different.
This is to authorizing the expenditures to conduct the referendum.
Oh, okay, I see.
First was the resolution.
Okay, I see. Sorry.
And I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number four. Anybody?
Madam Chair? Acting as the Water Pollution Control Authority, motion to adopt a resolution entitled "Resolution Authorizing Preparation, Printing, and Distribution of Explanatory Text for Proposed Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades and Related Improvements Projects Bond Ordinance."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, January 2, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the municipal center to hear public comment on a proposed dog park location on Norton Place Extension.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the sale of a town vehicle at auction, as recommended by the Buildings and Grounds Superintendent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Lee, do we have any other discussion of interest tonight?
Just one item. With regards to the renters rebate program, the state of Connecticut did reduce the money that we were going to receive through the ECS formula to pay for a portion of the renters rebate program. We've already... That was part of the holdback, so we've already been impacted by the state pushing some of that back down onto the town to pay for that program.
Okay. Thank you.
Not all of it, but a portion of it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to move into executive session for a litigation matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.